Our public hearing of filed 17397, the application by Rupert Murray Reedy regarding the appealing to the decision of the zoning enforcement officer related to the property of 146 Melerton Road. As you all know, we went two and a half hours plus at our last meeting, Mr. Reedy was able to present his case. At this point right now, I would like to, first, we've been getting letters about our minutes. Our minutes do comply with FOI. It's not a transcript of this hearing. If you'd like to have a transcript of this hearing, you can bring a blank DVD or CD into Jean and she can burn you the transcript. So, there's nothing that we're trying to hide here. You're totally transparent of what's going on. So if you want to have a transcript of this hearing, bring a CD into Jean, she will burn for you. And if you want to transcribe into writing, there's services that will transcribe that for you. So, Steve, do you have a few words on that?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. Good evening, everyone. My name is Attorney Stephen Byrne and I'm giving counsel to the board for this matter. And I would send a copy of the minutes and I did advise the board that the minutes as prepared did comply with the Freedom of Information Act, Connecticut statutes 1-200. While it's not verbatim, state law does not require verbatim minutes. The minutes should just reflect who was here, where the meeting was, what time it was held, and also any votes taken. And the minutes I saw did comply with those requirements, but it went a bit further. Again, it looks like when they say transparency, the letter I have in the public, I think is what they're looking for is possibly a transcript which can be made from the tapes. So, my advice, the board that the minutes did comply with the law.
Thank you, Steve. So, we're going to proceed with people who are in, I'd like to say something on behalf of Mr. Reedy. I'm giving people five minutes to present what they want to present and they will move on to the next person. When they're done, we'll move on to the planning and zoning enforcement officer and then there we'll go with the people at 146. So, does anybody have any...
Mr. Chairman, I have a point of order that I'd like to make.
Yes.
Can I address, come up to the table and make it?
Sure.
If you do so, please speak loud enough so everyone can hear you.
Okay, here you go. I wish to raise a point of order regarding the minutes for the public hearing. I object to the intentionally incomplete form of the minutes for the following reasons: They depart from past practice, violate the bylaws of the ZDA, violate fundamental due process and equal application of the law rights granted to all citizens, demonstrate the basic unfairness and bias on the part of the board with respect to my appeal and the prejudgment of appeal, and violate the provisions of the Connecticut Freedom of Act of information act. I'm handing you a copy of the minutes of the public hearing October 17th.
Are we going to have these?
Yes, but I just wanted to have, I don't know what you have in front of you. They describe my two-hour presentation, the facts in support of my appeal as Mr. Reedy presented the following documents to be included for the record and gave a lengthy presentation. I have reviewed the past minutes of the meetings of the ZDA going back for the last 10 years. The brevity of Miss Bell's minutes is unprecedented. The ZDA holds three types of meetings: regular meetings, special meetings, and public meetings. With one exception, the minutes of the regular meetings and the public meetings contain a list of all speakers on each side of an issue and an abstract of their statements. The exception is when a board decides on a two-thirds vote to go into executive session to discuss an issue because of pending litigation. No minutes are kept of the matters discussed in executive session. Miss Bell has chosen to convert the public hearing to the equivalent of an executive session for purposes of recording the proceedings in the form of written minutes. Miss Bell stated in her conversation with Mr. Donald Ross that she was advised by Attorney Stephen Byrne, counsel of the ZDA, as to the form of the minutes required by the Connecticut Freedom of Information Act, and the minutes as posted comply with the requirements of the act. It is too early to tell whether this is a new minute preparation practice to be adopted by the board going forward or a one-off departure to be applied only for the present appeal. I'm handing you a publication describing the taking of minutes under Ross's rules of You will note that the types of minutes are a function of the meeting for which they are taken. In meetings of boards of directors or boards of trustees, there is no object in reported debates, and the minutes record what is done by the board, and that is not what is said by the members. In such case, the minutes would typically record motions, those who voted for and against the motion, and the outcome of the vote, much as your counsel just advised you. When the minutes are to be published, as were the ZDA minutes however, they should contain a list of speakers and a summary of their remarks. Art of the law is the bylaws of the ZDA deal with public hearings. Section 2A thereof provides an relevant part. Proceedings of the hearing shall be incorporated into the minute book of the board to be a permanent part of the record. Webster's New Collegiate Dictionary defines proceedings as "an official recording of things said or done." The employment of the word lengthy to describe what I said during the hearing makes a mockery of the process. Due process and equal protection of the law are fundamental legal concepts enshrined in both the U.S. and state constitutions and are based on the concept of fairness in government proceedings. Equal treatment of the law means that my remarks made in the meaning of a municipal agency are entitled to the same treatment as the remarks of other appellants as customarily reflected in the minutes of that agency. The agency does not have the authority to pick and choose among the appellants as to which appellate makes it into the minutes. I'm handing you a copy of the minutes of the May 10 public hearing, 2016. At which issues regarding my original appeal were discussed and ruled upon. You will note that the statements and positions of the speakers were limited for the record. Under Miss Bell's recently adopted practice, instead of describing the proceedings in the minutes, the minutes would have settled in the new practice, and this is what you would be looking at crossing out. This is the same matter, and this is the difference. It's as if you were to take the minutes and say, "Well, you don't need this part." Excuse me, enough of the dramatics, please, get to the point. I will, as always, appreciate your treatment of me here. This is, in the present situation, the concept of fairness is also what you're trying with the necessity of correcting the records. In the minutes of the 510 16 public hearing, Miss Bell records, "Lengthy discussion followed Mr. Reedy stating Miss Bell said she would get a copy of the application to Ann Brucey, CEO, and Miss Bell agreed, disagreed. This was an understatement, as Miss Bell meticulously denied during the hearing that she ever made such statements."
What does this have to do with our minutes? Can I, I want to know, what does it have to do with our minutes? You're going back to something that happened almost over a year ago, it's been resolved. We have to move forward.
I am trying to make a presentation as to why these minutes...
You had two and a half hours to make a presentation.
And all you did was bag me during the entire two and a half hours. I know you want to get rid of this.
Your time is up.
I'd like to put in my, I'd like to put in the rest of my presentation. I also note my minutes that I sent to you, the remarks are not entered into the record. And I also note for the record that I'm not being allowed to make a point of order in violation of our food order.
Mr. Chairman, I think Mr. Reedy, Attorney Reedy, has had more than adequate time to make his point and with his written materials, which will be part of the record, this board and public have adequate notice of what was said during, or his points of order are. And I'd also direct the board to just look at its Art of Law and its bylaws, which just says that all public hearings qualified this board shall be held in accordance with Chapter 124 of the Connecticut statutes. And as we know, the general statutes only require at this board making a recording of the public hearing and the public wants a transcript that you give. How do you get that recording?
I've also received, and I believe he sent it on to Miss Bell, a statement from Donald Ross, and he asked me to read it in.
You have your time.
Well, you just submit that for the record.
Yes, I'll take that for the record, please. Thank you.
Is all this for the record?
Yes. It's kind of out of order now. Thanks again.
Okay, does anybody have a five-minute? Please come up, state your name, your address, please.
My name's Dean Halbury. I live at 144 Melerton Road. I'm a public property owner to Mr. Tyler's property at 146. As you probably all know, I sold that property to Mr. Tyler a number of years ago. And first of all, I want to thank the committee.
Did you turn the microphone on or speak up into it?
It is on. It is on.
Do I need to repeat anything?
No.
Okay. So, I want to thank the committee first of all, and the volunteers and what that you are, and I appreciate that. I wanted to just say a word about Mrs. Bruce, and she has been disparaged and put afar.
Can I, can I talk to you right there? Is this for Mr. Reedy's case? Are you speaking on behalf of Mr. Reedy?
I'm speaking...
On behalf of Mr. Reedy?
No.
Okay, I'm sorry. I need to speak with people right now who wanted to speak on behalf of Mr. Reedy, and afterwards you can come up, okay? I'm sorry. You have five minutes, anybody want to come up, they have five minutes? State your name.
My name is Mary Silks, I own property at 123 Interlake and Road Lakeville. So, as a property owner on the lake, I'm always concerned that I need to vote, and has the potential to degrade the water quality and ecology of the lake. So, I have my presentation in pictures. This is the slide, and... Or as I sometimes call it, how did we get from here to the next one? So, the existing house at 146 was about 1,500 square feet, a one-story house, non-conforming by being less than 25 feet from the side of the property line and less than 75 feet from the water course. In the next slide, 2007 survey map shows the property line as a straight line with the piped portion of the stream being to the west and on 146 property. Next slide, in February of 2009, the property line was altered and a bump out was created. This now made the existing house at 146 conforming on the side yard setback. The next slide, in May of 2009, property line again changed, although minor changes, the house is still conforming on the side yard setback. Next slide, in March of 2010, there was another property line change however that eliminated the bump out and again made the house non-conforming. This recreation of a non-conformity would be a violation of Planning and Zoning Regulation 502.1. Next slide, in a letter from Attorney Kathy Sillacho, he acknowledges that they recreated the non-conformity and takes responsibility for his mistake, but my question is, does an admission of a mistake and apology negate the zoning regulation? So, this is the site plan and demolition plan that was submitted in August of 2014. You will notice there's no bump out, and the piped portion of the stream is now not located on 146. It is shown to be on 144 Melerton Road. So, that is a misrepresentation of the location of that pipe. It also shows the water course, the Belgo Brook there to the left, as a ditch and not as a stream. And it wasn't ever really acknowledged as a stream until much later on.
One quick question, just for clarification. Are you saying that the first indication of our order course was correct and this is incorrect?
Yes. The next slide. So, this was the plan showing, that was presented, showing the new structure in pink and the existing structure in orange. The blue circles are the setbacks from the opening and the entrance and exit of the pipe. And it was stated that the new house would be further from the lake and would be conforming except for a small triangle that was in the setback. And this is the plan that was approved by P&amp;Z on September 2nd, 2014. At the November 18th, 2014 meeting, the planning and zoning, Mr. Reedy and myself pointed out discrepancies in the plan and reported to the commission that the house was not being built in the approved location. When the professionals working for the applicant were questioned by P&amp;Z and asked if the house was closer to the lake than the commission had approved, each said that that was not true. They stated that it is exactly as shown on the original plan, further from the lake than the existing house. And the next slide. It was later shown that the house was not where they had approved, and it was closer to the lake and now violated the setback from the water course. This was as a result of the site visit for planning and zoning, and this was when the CCD system was issued. And the next slide is again an acknowledgement of another mistake. The next slide. So, to comply with the setbacks, a portion of the house had to be removed. However, it's unclear as to whether or not the foundation was entirely moved and should be counted in the impervious surface calculation. It is also my opinion, which agrees with the Connecticut DEDP's opinion, that a water course in a pipe is not stopping, a water course in a setback can still apply. And this is the map too, that also shows the septic location. And now it shows the correct location of the piped portion of the stream. It's been moved back over to the correct location, yes. The next slide. The leaching fields for this property are only slightly more than 100 feet from the high water mark of the lake. The Planning and Zoning Regulation 404.5 reads that mill portions should be located within 150 feet for new construction. So, it would be, in my opinion, that with none of the original house remaining and so little of the footprint being covered, that this should be considered as new construction, as lake protection. In fact, in a March 11th, 2015 meeting of all the commissions, representatives from all celebrate commissions plus Torrenton Area Health, that question came up. Torrenton Area Health said that they have the standard state regulations, but every town, a regulator for a lot of towns, every town has their own regulations. And it's the town regulations that take, if they're more strict, that's what you go by. So, it's not just that Torrenton Area Health approved this. So, it's only a little over 100 feet, 100 feet from the lake, and it is also, I think it's 26 feet from the stream. So, and next slide. So, this shows the overlay of the red is, was the existing house, the blue is the one that was built in the wrong location, and the green is what is, was ultimately built. So, one of the stated purposes of the Lake Protection Overlay District is to require measures that will assist in arresting the progress of lake beautification and to protect water quality. It does not appear to me that this is the case here. It's precisely the kind of development that is degrading lakes all across the country. You pass on a small lot, strip the vegetation from the land, add side and fertilizer, and you have the perfect recipe for lake beautification. And next. And we're wondering if the additional construction that's not shown on the site plan is added to the amount of impervious surface. Because there's a few things there that are not, were not shown on the site plan and were not calculated as impervious surface. And the last slide. This is the EPA National Lakes Assessment that found that degraded lakeshore habitat, lakeshore disturbance, turbidity, and increased nutrients are the significant risks to the biological health of lakes. And we're very concerned about our lake. In fact, we're already seeing algae blooms that may indicate the declining health of our lake. Last November, we had one or more types of cyanobacteria, the blue-green algae, that are capable of producing neurotoxins and pathotoxins. In August of this year, another blue-green was identified that causes skin irritation and GI symptoms. And in September of this year, the dominant algae was again the one capable of producing neurotoxins and pathotoxins. And this is something new for our lake. And in both August and September, the recommendation was to stay out of the water until the bloom dissipated. The Solferis regulations are meant to protect our natural resources, but they cannot do this if applicants submit false and misleading information and the town's commissions rely solely on the veracity of the applicant. In order to achieve the purposes of the regulations, the information submitted must be reviewed for accuracy and then the regulations must be enforced. Thank you for your time.
Anyone else have anything to present? This is five minutes, Bruce?
Jeff, I will certainly do my darkest.
I'd like to prepare me to keep it to five minutes. Does this one run over?
Anybody else want a copy?
Yep.
I'm going to put it up on the website so you can all have it as well. So, if you'd like to look at it, it's great. If I'd known, Jeff, if you'd have just kept the five minutes, I would have taken this presentation and distilled it to five. I didn't, because I didn't know that. And that's part of the reason why I sent you the email today.
I never received an email.
Yeah, well, I got proof of that. So, let's just go to my presentation. And I'm sorry that this has turned into the way it is, because we really are looking for a process, and that's what I want to see in this town, is a process.
Does this have anything to do with the application?
Yes.
It does?
Yes, it does. In fact, I wouldn't have been here, Jeff, unless it did. And that's an insulting question. The town of Insulfer appeals is, I'm going to go through this, you'll see there's 42 slides in this. You're probably already coming through it. If I'm going to do this in five minutes, first of all, let me identify myself. My name is Bruce Palmer. I'm located at 131 Interlake and Road. I swim, fish, and sail in and on this lake. I too have concerns with recent developments on the lake. I'm also very concerned about due process. I'm concerned about how our commissions interact, and I'm here to support Mr. Reedy's I'm concerned specifically with potential violations: expansion, septic, interpretation of insignificant activity, or in this case, significant activity, enforcement of road erosion control and permitting. Number two, I think we've been here before, that's in reference to a very similar application in 2009, but I'm going to pressure it past that one. And I'm going to go to number three, which is fairness to Mr. Reedy. The other things in my presentation to try to make this within five minutes, the delta formation, protecting our lake, misrepresentation, credibility, compliance, and the future health of our lake. Here's where it says what you guys need to do, or should do, as an appeals board. Since you have a hard copy and all of that, I respectfully ask be read into the record. I don't need to belabor the point. This is the location of where the property is. This talks about where Mr. Reedy is and where the two properties, 144 and 146, and this is Belgo string, sometimes referred to as a ditch. I have multiple videos which I am now supplying you, which I won't go through because I don't have the time, because it can be, can't be done in five minutes. But on that CD, you will see nine videos. The nine videos, if I were to summarize them, show interactions between the applicant and the various commissions, whether they be planning, zoning, or conservation. And also in on that CD is a discussion and a video of the process, meaning... And also in on that CD is a discussion and a video of the process, meaning when Mr. Reed brought his appeal to this board, it was chummed away. And here and after, he's back today doing the same thing. So that is on that CD. And it would be really, this is part of where I want to give a public service announcement to WKZ and Robert Laberio, because these videos would not be possible unless they filmed these meetings. So that's where I got the information. All right, moving on to my presentation. Here is the potential violations. This is where it was in 2005. This is where it is now. This is facing the lake. This is facing the road. 2005, 2017. Here is where the calculations, basically total living space, gross 1,509 feet in 2005. In 2017, 5,903, a 391% increase. So you get the point here. This message is saying that we've got significant expansion. Maybe legal, maybe not. I'm not an attorney, but I do know that it was a non-conformant structure at one point in time. The other violations that I've seen is the septic fields too close to Belvo Stream. This is where the reference is to the ditch. Again, Mary has talked about that, the other fields, and she also outlined that, so I won't repeat myself. Here are the actual legislative requirements and the public code on the setback. And it's here on your pages, so we're now on slide 13. Moving now to the issue of insignificant activity. As you know, the applicant went in front of the conservation group and they made a determination that the, all the construction was insignificant. I beg to differ. These arrows talk about how each one of those are significant activities, not insignificant. This is significant activity. And as a consequence, and the significance of this point is that if the conservation committee had followed their own guidelines, you would have seen here that this was significant activity. And the significance of the significant activity is they'd have to look at an upland review. But consequently, there was no upland review. Why is that important? That is because Belvo Stream is above that and there's some issues in the stream that add to the complexity of this problem. So citizens tried to address that in that meeting and they were pushed aside. And so the question being asked here is how can we give us a certificate of compliance today, knowing that that has been overlooked and pushed aside? Here is an example where I am talking, this is the ditch, the stream, the erosion. Here is the showing of the construction. This is the top soil, it's mounted up top. And here is the delta that's grown. This was brought in 2016, on February 24th, to the conservation committee and they were actually working it through. Actually, the town, the conservation, and Mr. Halbert and Curtis Randian were involved this summer with trying to work out an agreeable solution that fell through. Here is another violation, erosion control, which was taken three weeks ago. This driveway is being repaid, it looks, there's equipment, and there are no erosion controls, i.e. silt fenc or hay bales.
Bruce, just again, a quick question.
Yep.
Are you saying that you're asking the EPA, past jurisdiction, to consider these remarks you've just made about erosion and significant or insignificant activity?
Yes, all of that comes in how the application was put together and what's currently happening. So the question I think that we have in front of us is a certificate of compliance. And what I'm trying to say is that even as short period, three weeks ago, we weren't in compliance with erosion control. So that's clearly got to be an issue.
All right, thanks. Give me a little three minutes, please.
Yep, and we're going to try to race through this. So here's another interesting permitting issue. Down here, you'll see that this certificate to discharge by Kathy Weber was issued on October 23rd of this year. That was three weeks ago. And yet it was inspected in 2014. So the question here is, why is this certificate to discharge being issued just three weeks ago? And how could you give a certificate of compliance on the project if you haven't even got the permit for discharge filed? So that's a permitting issue. The last two minutes, slide 18, we've been through this. This is the biggest issue I think that we're facing in the town of Salisbury right now is due process, fairness to Mr. Reed. In this quote, Mr. Rand will note this because his dad actually wrote this book. And it's a very good book. And I would suggest that anybody that wants to know anything about planning and zoning, there are regs in here, there are case studies, it's... So I'm going to give that to you, Jeff.
I already have one.
Who doesn't have one? Okay. Okay, so I won't go through this, but you know by now that we haven't been fair to Mr. Reed. And here's the emails that you'll see that support that. Here's his application. Here's conversation with Ms. Bell on receiving it. Who got it? He said, "Ooh, ha, ooh, ha." And this has been another big issue that is going to be put into the record, that we have Attorney Andrews and Attorney Kirk. It looks like collusion, but I don't want to say that in a public hearing. Whoops, I'm sorry. All right, so what were they discussing? Well, I'm not going to interrupt you through this because you've only given me five minutes, but it's right here in writing. I'm going to run right through it. If we get the answers, I anticipate she will be giving, it's going to be a short hearing. Why should it be short, Peter? Chuck, why should we have a short meeting? We should have a long open meeting. Finishing up, this is another video that discussed this issue. Here is the quotes that Mr. Lloyd was even, and you'll read that in your minutes in your presentation. And you'll see it's tossed out. This is Mr. Reed going to Washington, now actually literally parts to try to get his day here, be successful. Here's the delta I was talking about. This is the damage of 2009. This is what we're talking about protecting the lake. Six K, this representation, the stream is a stream is a stream, what part don't you get? And then these questions and the answers are always yes, it's not good news. And then these videos that clearly demonstrate the issues that I'm trying to make, but I only have five minutes. And then we have credibility, and this one is really good. This is where, and it is on that, and I hope all of you will read it, but listen to it. I'll have it up on the website tomorrow. This is where you had a discussion between John Higgins and Attorney Capus Elektra, talking about the fact that there's some credibility issues. This is John Higgins' words, not mine. So I would encourage you to look at that video and listen to that. I've got four more slides. Jerry Reed, as a person, he does have integrity. He is a gentleman, and he truly has the best interests of the lake and the community in mind. He is also an individual who is known for dotting his i's and crossing the t's, which is why he's getting into trouble today. What if we ignore all of this? Back in 2009, Commissioner Jeff Lloyd was correctly stated by saying, "It's going to get ugly, but you just can't ignore a decision of order made," Mr. Lloyd said. And I need a glass of water now because I'm all tied up in the face here. If our decisions are not going to be enforced, why bother to add zoning? So this is before the 2009 churn row, and this is after. That's what we're worried about. Concluding remarks. This is a complex and involved application spanning over three years. I've tried to show in this presentation that was timed to be 38 minutes down to five. Not all of these issues need to be looked at. And given the complexity and the scope of this project, I recommend to you tonight that you request an administrative review of the numerous proposed violations. See if they do have basis. See if there's any substance to them. And I will tell you, being a layperson myself, a lot of these issues are complex and they need expert advice. And this is what our county needs so desperately, is experts on the various committees so that we can understand what we're making decisions that affect everybody's enjoyment of lake to lake. Thank you for listening and for volunteering your time.
Thank you.
Excuse me. Just two points to make sure our record's clear. And maybe Steve, you could help us. My version of the pamphlet that Bruce distributed has both your name and Thomas, your father?
Yes, yes.
And it's a sixth edition.
Right.
And yet this pamphlet is much thicker for a fourth edition. What's the difference?
Your copy is just for zoning board appeals, while the handbook, the thicker book, is for planning and zoning commissions, so it gets into subdivisions and special permits and vending zoning regulations.
Okay.
We need to update that one. That was updated.
This was updated.
I stuck my name on it, so we need to get that updated.
Okay.
Lastly, these are two pictures of the ditch, that's really a stream, that I'd like to enter to the record.
And one other point, just for the record, is there was a lot of references to five minutes. In fact, it turned out to be 10 plus, like just so the file, this in fact, understood to be a little longer.
Yeah, no, I acknowledge that, because 32 minutes planned. And maybe for future public hearings, we should let people know they've got five minutes and then they can, you know, put their presentation in five minutes. But you'll never absorb this in five minutes, I can tell you that.
Anyone else? Okay. Chuck Anders. Just having this, getting my materials together, just to check that.
Sure.
Five minutes. Five minutes.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the commission. My name is Chuck Anders. I'm here representing Nancy Brucey, the zoning official, in connection with this response. I do have three things I'd like, pieces of paper that I'd like to submit to you for the record and then I'll follow up, review our presentation. The first is just a memo that summarizes the claims, our understanding of this appeal and what this is about. And just so there's no surprise, our basic claim here is that the issues that are being raised now by Mr. Reed are issues that, they're too late. They're issues that are attacking the site plan that was approved by the planning and zoning commission or the zoning permit initially approved by Mr. Brucey. That he can't attack those decisions as in part of an appeal by the certificate of zoning compliance. The, what, the sole purpose of a certificate of zoning compliance is to determine whether the house, this is what we're talking about, the house, was built as it was represented in the zoning permit. You don't, what you don't do is use that to revisit the earlier site plan application or the earlier zoning permit. And I believe all, or virtually all of the issues are those. So frankly, that's the main point. The point is that the issues that are being raised are untimely. They can't be raised as part of these proceedings. I disagree with a lot of the issues too, and I'll get to that. So I'm going to request that you deny the appeal. The one thing you can do, I think there's some, one of the claims Mr. Reed said is that the language in the certificate was insufficient. And what I'm saying you can do, because of what you're authorized to do, that's something that can be fixed. I've suggested some language that you may or may not want to add. I don't think you need to, but I think that remedy exists situation. So that's sort of where I'm going from, and I'll kind of review that and unpack that for you. But what I'll do is I'll get these out and then I'll kind of go through that in detail. And then I have to review some of the specific claims. So what I have is just, I'll give everyone copies of the memorandum. I don't know if there's an official clerk who can give you that one. Let's see where you want. Mr. Reed, with you.
Thank you.
You may go. That's the memo. The other thing, two other items I'd like to introduce. One, I don't believe the record has the original site plan package approved by the planning and zoning commission. It was actually the site plan, the actual approved site plan is here, as well as the other plans and drawings that were submitted and approved by the planning and zoning commission. So I thought that should be submitted for the record and you can submit that.
What you're saying, from what you earlier said, that that's not something we should consider?
Correct. I don't think you can review whether the planning and zoning commission did the right decision when they approved the site plan. That had to be challenged by an appeal to Superior Court within 15 days after the notice. It wasn't, so that's fine. So that, but what I'm saying is, the reason it's connected is the site plan application was what was given to the zoning permit. And the zoning permit included the site plan. And the certificate of zoning compliance, the ASB, refers back to the zoning permit. So you'll want to see, one of the things I can look at in a certificate of zoning compliance, I'm kind of getting ahead of myself here, is did they actually build it the way they were supposed to build it? In other words, they come in and get a zoning permit, "I'm going to put a house and it's situated right here." And they built it someplace differently, which in fact happened for the first time. If they applied for a certificate of zoning compliance, in the first time, Nancy shouldn't deny it because they didn't build it where it said you should do it. So, but that's what you do. At this stage of the proceeding, there's a whole sort of tradition. There's the issues of, does this comply with the zoning regulations? Does this house comply with the impervious surface, the height, the, all the setbacks, all those things that Mr. Reed has raised, the 75-foot setback, the minimum square, everything else. That's determined at the site plan, planning and zoning stage of the site plan. You want to kill that, you kill that within 15 days after notice. He didn't do that. And then what Nancy did was issued, they applied for a zoning permit and Nancy approved that. He did appeal that to you guys and that was dismissed. And then after the dismissal was built, I'd kind of review that in the facts. So anyway, let me just get this one other piece of paper and then I'll kind of go through this because I'm kind of grabbing my head on this stuff. The one other piece of paper I want to get in is, Mr. Reed introduced into the record a whole bunch of emails that I don't think had anything to do with this present appeal and they had to do with the last appeal. And as you saw, there's lots of emails back and forth with Mr. Reed and Ms. Brucey. And I'm not sure what the point of that was, since that issue was litigated, there was no appeal taken from that from the Superior Court decision. There were rights for review, chose not to do that. So that is a final decision. However, suggestions being made that Ms. Reed told me I should do it this way, there's an email from Ms. Reed, one of the, that I just want to put in the record. There's an email from Ms. Reedy, one of the, that, that I just want to put in the record where she basically, in response to a classic, you know, three-page email from Mr. Reedy, where he asked some factual questions, when did were the decisions made? And, you know, some other things, and she gave the answers. The decisions were made February twenty-second, Planning and Zoning Commission made their decision. I issued a zoning permit February twenty-ninth. But insofar as you're saying, I'm telling you how to take an appeal, I'm just claiming any of that. So I, I don't want, if, if part of the purpose of putting that in is to say, well, I'm just doing what Nancy told me to do, this is an email where Nancy says, hey, I'm, I'm not telling you how to sue, you know, or whatever, I'm, you know, I'm just putting, here's the factual information. So anyway, that's what this email says. And I don't know if it's relevant, but since all that other stuff's in the papers. Okay, now to run through the presentation, I've kind of told you what, where I'm coming from, that this is the issue in a Certificate of Zoning Compliance, is, is this, was this built as it was represented and built? And I started already gone through the history. The history and I, and I sent more than the memorandum, that it was, we're talking back in February twenty-sixteen. That's when the commission, Planning and Zoning Commission, made the site plan decision. After about a week later, Mr. Capcello, on behalf of property owner, requested a zoning permit, came in with a zoning permit with the approved site plan as part of that. Nancy Brucey approved, approved that. Mr. Reedy took that time in the appeal to this board. It was dismissed for procedural, it wasn't on merit, but it was, you guys dismissed it and that decision was upheld to Superior Court. And that took till about, I think in March of twenty-seventeen. Then for the next year or so, that's when the actual construction occurred. One of the things the Planning and Zoning Commission was, was concerned about, and by the way, they're absolutely correct, they were concerned, their credibility problem. Guys said, I'm going to build a house, can you build it somewhere else? Planning and Zoning Commission, Nancy issued a cease and desist order. You got to stop, the, the property was stopped. And they did come in and what you do, when something bad happens, try to fix it. They, they did, they came up with a whole new plan that conformed with the regulations and it was approved. But, so, so they got the, it took about a year to build the house. The zoning permit issued in February initially, but after the appeal, I think it was in March twenty-sixteen. And then for the next year or so, they built the house. One other conditions of approval, because, because they were concerned about erosion and other, other materials, particularly in the, in the lake overlay zone, is that a certified engineer submit a monthly report that the erosion controls are in place. And that was part of what was done, that was submitted, I believe Nancy submitted that as part of the record. Those are monthly reports to, again, concerned about impacts to the lake. So, and, and it was people's, an engineer whose license is on the line, is making representations. That's frankly how land use works. So, so that was done. And then in June, the registered surveyor, Matt Kiefer, went out and he did the aspect. He submitted a plan showing that the property was built as it was represented in the zoning permit, that it was built in the right location. There were no sub-act violations this time. It was done right this time. He also calculated the height, impervious surface, the other issues of zoning regulation. Nancy, to be sure, knowing this was a controversial issue, brought it before Planning and Zoning and said, hey, you guys, I've got this in, you know, before I sign off on it, it's her decision, not zoning. Mr. Reedy's absolutely correct. Just advised Reedy, said, you know, I want to let you know, do you see any problems with it? And he said, no. So she signed up. So that, and then this appeal was taken. So that's basically the facts. Just in terms of what I'm calling the standard of review, because that's what you do, what you're doing here, you're hearing an appeal from a decision by the zoning official. In these situations, you actually act as the zoning official. You can affirm, deny, or modify the decision. And you have the same powers as the zoning official. And the reason I think that's, if you read the statute, and I just quoted on page three at the top of that, but it's in any sort of...
What's the number of the statute, please?
Yeah, the statute is eight, seven. The reason I mention that is because that relates to the issue of, was it framed incorrectly? Was, was, do we, do we miss the language in the Certificate of Zoning Compliance? And that's what Mr. Reedy has said, what? He said, hey, you didn't say certain stuff you need to say that. Statute's required you to say that. And you didn't say it, so throw it out. What I'm saying is, if you, you act in that position and later on I say, okay, there's a, if you need to add a sentence about a certain finding, you can do it, and I suggest you can do that. So I'm just saying that's within your authority here as a, as a zoning board appeals.
How can we add a sentence or change it if you happy about making a site visit to make sure that it complied? I mean, if that's what we do, I mean, we're not certified...
The sentence that I'm, that's a good, that's a good question, Mr. Chair. And the, the sentence doesn't relate to additional findings on, on site. It relates to what is already in the town. And I'll review that later on, but that's, I understand it's a fair question. So, that gets me back to the main, sort of, my main argument in this case, which is that the old, the real issue here, the only issue here, is whether what was built conformed with the, with the, what was presented in the zoning permit, which was the site plan. Was the house built in that location? And was that, was it done as it was represented? And anything more than that is a collateral attack, is attacking the earlier site plan, the earlier zoning permit, and the time to do that is, is, has passed. And I cited, I think I cited four cases, and those go from, and so I'm not going to have to read them, but they go from page three. The cases go to page three, six, four Superior Court cases, but I think they're pretty much online. And the, and the reason is, is fairly understandable. In the land use field, time is money. Time is important. People rely on a permit. They spend money based on a permit. There are short appeal periods, appeal periods for a reason. So that if somebody gets a permit and allows them to do some building, you've got to appeal that within a short time or we lose your right to do so. Because a lot of times people spend a lot of money, as in this case, I don't know, Mr. Capcello is going to give you some numbers, but it's a lot of money, that they actually spend and reliance on that. So what you can't do is wait, again, this was in February twenty-sixteen is when the original site plan, and here it is eighteen months later, more than that, over a year and a half later, can't raise the issues now that you should have rose at, at that time because people have invested, spent money in that, your right to do so is, is done. That is, to me, that is the easiest issue about this. That is, otherwise it's a collateral attack. And that, that's basically pages three through, to eight, that's the main, that's the authority for that. The, and, and the other part is that I think the house was constructed in accordance with the zoning permit. And again, we had the ASBIL from Mr. Kiefer, the site inspections, we got the reports from the engineers, what all about the erosion controls. And I, I, Mr. Reedy, one thing he put a lot of stuff in, the one thing he didn't do is to put any expert evidence that it didn't, it wasn't built in accordance with the zoning permit. He didn't have, he didn't have, he didn't say anything about the height being too tall. I mean, he did, he says he thinks it might be, but he hasn't had anyone measure it and, and say that it's, that, that he thinks the height is X, that it exceeds his own violations. He questions impervious surface, but he hasn't given us a calculation what he thinks it is or provided any, any, you know, licensed professionals that, that do that. And, you know, whether or not, that's how, that's how zoning operates. You do rely on opinions by licensed professionals. Nancy is not a surveyor. She relies on that, she went out, she did her own site inspections. She, she can ballpark it, but you don't want that. You want someone putting their, their authorization, their certification on the line and making representations. And that's what we have here. We have expert evidence that says that it is in conformance with the, with, with the zoning permit. And that is, to me, that's the case. That, that's where this is. I do, starting on page nine, I talk about the issue of whether the Certificate of Zoning Compliance, the language should have also, what, what Mr. Reedy says, his argument is that under the statutes, you're supposed to also, what, what she did say is that the, in the certificate, that she found that it complied, that the house as built complied with the houses represented in the zoning permit. I determine all requirements and conditions of the zoning permit for the property have been met. And I think that's what she's, that's, in this particular case, when everyone else has made the decision, when you couldn't challenge it if you wanted to, that's what she had to find. And frankly, that's what one of the regulations says. The regulation is at nine, ten, point one. It says, "No certificate of zoning compliance," and this is on page nine, "shall be issued by the zoning administrator until the zoning administrator or designated has inspected the property and the zoning administrator has determined that all requirements and conditions of the zoning permit, including special perlin site plan, have been met by the applicant." So that language, which is in the regulation, is sort of mirrored in her finding. What Mr. Reedy is also saying is that, well, he should have added additional language that it complies with the zoning regulations and/or is it not conforming. That's what he's saying, he's saying the statutes say you have to say that. That's why everything is argumentally. And what I'm saying is that in this case, you don't need to do that because her role was under the regulations and under this, is, is limited to simply doing that. She can't second guess the zoning commission, whether they were right. She has no authority to, at this point, to say was the zoning commission right to issue the site plan in the first place. That said, I think you can add a sentence, and I highlighted it in there because I think you have that authority. And I think you can, and in the sentence, it's highlighted at the end of page, you know, nine, ten, and eleven, you could add a sentence in addition, based on the items mentioned above, which is the, you know, the certifications, the site inspections, and the letters by the experts. And in accordance with the decision on February twenty-two, twenty-sixteen, by the Planning and Zoning Commission, approving the site plan application for one forty-six Morton Milton Road and the zoning permit issued on this date, it is also found that the premises and buildings have been constructed in compliance with all applicable provisions of the zoning regulations or a law of emergency or non-conformity. So I think that sentence would be warranted if you wanted to add it. I don't think you need to, but I think you could do it. And then I think that, that would be a, a language that would conform the regulation. You'd be authorized to do that because frankly, those decisions have been made and it's due like to be built. So I, I, I think that, and it specifically says, you're relying on what they did. When the zoning commission approved the site plan, it had to have found that it complied with zoning regulations of the laws, it couldn't, you know, excite case law for that. So that, that is what I say to that issue. And then on pages ten and eleven, I sort of review a number of other issues that are sort of raised. Again, I think they're sort of subsumed what I said already, but I'll kind of run through them. There were some claims that there were violations of the state demolition code and the state building code. Again, I don't know, you know, I don't, I think they're on time of year, they shouldn't have been raised earlier. But you guys don't hear appeals. The demolition code is an ordinance. It's, it's a countermiss, it is not a zoning regulation. Your authority under eight-six to hear appeals from violations of, of zoning regulations. So you, if, if there is some issue with a violation of another law, that's not the proper subject for you. Also with the building code, a certificate of, a certificate of occupancy, by the way, is a building code certificate, it's not a zoning issue. And if he's, you know, saying that there's a building permit issue or a certificate of occupancy issue, that's a building code issue. There is something called a building code board of appeals. There's a process to appeal if you think there's a violation of the building code. But it isn't going for you, thanks. You hear, you hear claims from decisions, from errors from the zoning commission.
In Salisbury, is there such a body?
I don't know. I don't, I, my, what my, they're authorized to form them, but what, what my experience has been, and I haven't looked, is that they may be formed and they kind of sit there and then, they don't have any business because there's not a lot of appeals to them. And typically, there is a, the building code is a, is a uniform, it's a statewide code, so a lot of times you, you know, you check with the state building person and if they may, you know, and all the interpretations, it's the same in every town, along zoning regulations, which are different in every town. So, but I, I don't, I don't know if one has been appointed or if there's one active, but no appeal was taken.
That's what I know, that's the same.
But there is a process for appointing one and it's in the statute as well. He, he claims that he violated the minimum square and the seventy-five foot water course requirements. Again, I believe he made those claims to the Planning and Zoning Commission and if he, he, he can't raise those now. They timed to have raised those, would have been an appeal from the decision of the Planning and Zoning Commission, can't raise it here. He made a claim that there was, he should have gotten a special permit for excavating and filling. Again, I think that, again, is an issue that should have been raised, not after all the work has been done. Could have been raised either, again, as part of the site plan or part of the zoning permit, or a request that there's stuff going, or a request the zoning official, you know, go inspect the site and we think this is unauthorized. That said, the regulations do have, there are two exemptions that I believe cover this. There, there's exemptions for onsite activities when less than two-hundred-and-fifty cubic yards of materials have been removed from the site. In this case, none of the materials were removed from the site. There was digging in a hole and there was grade operations and, but not, it was not more than two-hundred-and-fifty cubic yards removed from the site. I believe none was removed from the site. So that comes within that exemption. There's another exemption for activity, for plans approved as for...
Excuse me?
Yes.
Other than your opinion?
Yeah.
Is there any proof of that?
Any proof that less than two-fifty were removed from the site?
That nothing was removed from the site.
That's what I've been informed by the, I, I think I've seen a letter from that by the, by someone with, by the person working on the site. I don't believe that's Mr. Capcello because he's the guy that said that. That's, I'll, I'll qualify that to best our information, believe, that's my understanding. And I'll believe that's him. But there's another exemption, which is excavation as, as part of an approved plan in accordance with plans approved by the Planning and Zoning Commission. And in this package of materials, again, it wasn't simply a site plan, there was, there was elevations, there was erosion control plans, there was engineering plans, and they included a grade. So they did actually show the contours that was going to be done on the site, and that was approved by the Planning and Zoning Commission's part of the pro, part of the package. And again, I think the property owner corrected that, it should have been built. So it comes within that exemption. He claims that Ms. Brucey wrongly issued the zoning permit because she failed to issue first withdrawal of prior cease and desist order in writing. And again, that's an issue that goes with the zoning permit, that you can't raise it in the Certificate of Zoning Compliance. The issue is then you shouldn't, you can't raise that for the first time. The only issue is whether this complies with the plans in the zoning permit. But that said, there is nothing wrong with rescinding, orally rescinding a cease and desist order. Many decisions are made orally. You guys make your decisions orally. Someone makes a motion and it's second and you vote and it's orally and that's your decision. Judges sometimes get decisions from the bench. You may have different, maybe have different obligations that say you should send a letter or whatever, but there's nothing like that that I'm aware of for a cease and desist order, for withdrawal, cease and desist order. He cited no authority that says that it has to be in writing. And, and he did cite the statute of frauds, which is something that says that certain agreements for the sale of real property or interest in real property have been written. This was not an agreement. This was an order, so the statute of frauds is no applicability. This has nothing to do with a sale of a real property or an interest in real property, so it doesn't apply for that. Again, nothing was recorded on the land records, so that's not an issue here.
Certainly not.
Sure.
Who was the oral representation made?
Who? Who? It was made to the, to the person who was issued to, to the, it was issued to the property owner to cease and desist. And the, and it was withdrawn orally to the property owner's representative prior to the issuance of the cease, the zoning permit.
Presented by?
Correct, Mr. Capcello. And if he's worried about a writing, Ms. Brucey informed Mr. Reedy in writing that she had done so. And he actually spoke that as an exhibit to his appeal, where one of the letters to Mr., to Mr. Reedy, she acknowledges, as I told you, as you told him that... as she told him that I orally withdrew that when I issued the zoning permit. So he had notice in writing. He also, in his private deal papers, acknowledged that he knew about it. So if he wanted to take appeal, he had thirty days from his actual notice to do so. He's known about it for a long time, he hasn't taken an appeal, so any appeal rest he had then expired. Again, I'm pointing out that Mr., that Nancy Brusie properly relied on the calculations by Mr. Kiefer, who's a registered land surveyor, whose business about height and about the pervert surface, and there's no contrary evidence, expert evidence, and we've seen it, so we think the record supports your position. That's all I got. Nancy, is there anything else you want to add?
No. I think that Mr. Palmer was addressing the issue of a permit to discharge from Torrington area. That permit to discharge has nothing to do with zoning. It goes directly to the building inspector, the building office, and has nothing to do with our zone at all. So I just wanted to clarify.
Thank you. Any questions?
Um, do you have any questions? Thank you. Next. Mr. Capulatro?
Yes. Good evening. For the record, my name is Mark Capulatro, attorney for BMCT one forty-six. I'll see the owner of the property at one forty-six Milton Road, which is the subject of this appeal. Before beginning my formal remarks, I would like to, to address my objections to some of the exhibits that were submitted by Mr. Reedy at the October gathering of the zoning board of appeals. He submitted a number of documents, which I have enumerated in the letter to the chair and to make part of the record. There were eight, most, eight items that he submitted that improperly draws in the appeal from the issuance of the zoning permit that was brought to this commission in two thousand and sixteen. That's not the issue that's before you. That appeal came to you, you found that you did not have jurisdiction to hear that on the merits. You denied the appeal. That was thereafter appealed to the Superior Court, going to Judicial District of Litchfield. That went to judgment. There's a memorandum of decision, which is actually part of Mr. Reedy's submission, which states that that appeal was, his appeal to, to that court was denied. To introduce paperwork having to do with that appeal as part of this appeal just lends to confusion. It doesn't deal with the issue that is before you tonight, and should not be considered as part of, as part of your deliberations. There are seven other items to which I raise objections, different reasons. They relate to, for the most part, to a property that's not even the property that's the subject of this zoning appeal. It relates to one forty-four Milton Road, does not relate to one forty-six. Why that would be, why one forty-four Milton Road would be relevant to this appeal leaves me breathless. There are other elements of this. In one case, it's a two thousand and seven site plan approval that was not even this owner, or the owner before this owner, it was the owner before that. Again, it has no relevance to what was built and whether what was built complies with the zoning regulations. So I raise those, those objections. I believe that you should deny Mrs. Reedy's appeal of the decision of the zoning administrator to issue the certificate of zoning compliance. She has, to her attorney Gerald Reedy, made a claim that the construction and location of the new house violates the planning and zoning regulations of the town of Salisbury, and the summary of facts attached to that application in the October twenty-three, two thousand and seventeen, a tandem to that application, which is entitled, "Review of the Violations of the Planning and Zoning Regulation" just reflects a tangle of disinformation, outright misrepresentation of the actual facts and circumstances surrounding the approval of the construction of the residence, the approval of the application for site plan approval, the issuance of the zoning permit, and the issuance of the certificate of zoning compliance by the zoning enforcement officer. The only issue that's in front of you tonight is to determine whether or not the zoning enforcement officer was correct in their determination that the improvements as constructed at one forty-six Milton Road substantially conformed to the site plans previously approved and the zoning permit that was issued after the approval of those site plans by the Planning and Zoning Commission at its February twenty-two, two thousand and sixteen meeting, and that all of the conditions of the zoning permit that were articulated by the commission when it approved of the site plan in February two thousand and sixteen had been met. Matt Kiefer, who was the registered land surveyor, prepared an as-built, went to the site. He field-located all of the improvements that had been completed with regard to all the setback lines. He measured the structure. He measured all of the impervious surfaces. He calculated the building height in accordance with the methodology that the planning and zoning regulations set forth. He submitted an as-built field survey, which he signed and sealed, certifying that his work is accurate. Similarly, he did in letter form a certification of the accuracy of his calculation of the building height and his calculation of impervious surfaces. That was a part of the record. Mrs. Brusie then took the as-built site plan and did a site visit on her own to verify with her own eyes that what was represented there was what she defined on the ground. She was apparently satisfied with that, but wished to have the counsel of the Planning and Zoning Commission, and then brought that as-built from Mr. Kiefer and his calculations to the Planning and Zoning Commission, which could take no formal action on it. It was not their position to, to approve or to direct the issuance of these certificates of compliance. But they all reviewed that information. And at that meeting, the commission was polled. Of the five seated regular members, who were asked whether or not they felt what was represented by Mr. Kiefer's plan and Mr. Kiefer's calculation was accurate, four of the five answered that they thought it, it looked accurate to them. The fifth, the fifth person offered no opinion. This was not a formal vote, but it was a confirmation of what Mrs. Brusie reviewed and seeking the counsel of the commission, whose bidding she does. She brought it to them, and then thereafter made her decision and issued the certificate of zoning compliance. You should deny the appeal of Rosemary Reedy and confirm the zoning enforcement officer's decision to issue the certificate of zoning compliance because the site plan approval application determines whether or not what is on that site plan as proposed meets the zoning regulations. The Sulphur Planning and Zoning Regulations Section eight hundred point one describes the purpose of site plans as follows. "A site plan provides the commission with information necessary to determine whether or not a proposed activity meets the standards and requirements of these regulations." And I have a copy of that for you as Exhibit A, which I'd like to submit at this time. Section eight hundred point two of the regulation states in pertinent part, "Every site plan application shall be accompanied by such information and reports as required in these regulations and as necessary to determine conformity with these regulations." Section eight oh seven point four of the Planning and Zoning Regulations state in pertinent part, and I'm quoting, "In making its decision, the Planning and Zoning Commission shall give due consideration to the report of the Conservation Commission slash Illinois Wetlands and Water Forces Agency and shall state on its record the reasons for any terms and conditions of its decision that are not consistent with the final decision of the Conservation Commission and Wetlands Agency." This section of the Planning and Zoning Commission Regulations is in conformity with Connecticut General Statute Section eight dash three, sub G, sub one, a copy of which I've given to you as Exhibit D. And that states in pertinent part, and I quote, "The applicant shall submit an application for permit to the agency responsible for administration and the Wetlands Regulations not later than the day such application is filed with the zoning commission. The decision of the zoning commission shall not be rendered on the site plan application until the Illinois Wetlands Agency has submitted a report with its final decision. In making its decision, the commission shall give due consideration to the report of the Illinois Wetlands Agency. A site plan may be modified or denied only if it fails to comply with requirements already set forth in the zoning or in the Wetlands Regulations." The Connecticut Supreme Court, in the case of the City of Norwood, General versus Norwood Wilder Company, which I've attached as Exhibit C, and would submit for the record, states, and the court stated this, and I'm quoting, "In reviewing and approving site plans, the commission acts in administrative capacity and sites and other competitive things. Furthermore, in reviewing site plans, the commission has no independent discretion beyond determining whether the plan complies with the applicable regulations and is under a mandate to apply the requirements of the regulations as written." And that cites the Allied Plywood versus Planning and Zoning Commission of the town of Windsor case, which I'm also submitting as your Exhibit D. In the Allied Plywood versus Planning and Zoning Commission of the town of South Windsor case, the court stated that, quote, "Connecticut General Statutes, Section eight dash three G, provides in pertinent part that," quoting the statute, "a site plan may be modified or denied only if it fails to comply with the requirements set forth in the regulations. In ruling upon the site plan application, the planning commission acts in its ministerial capacity rather than in its quasi-judicial or legislative capacity. It is given no independent discretion beyond determining whether the plan complies with the applicable regulations. The board is under a mandate to apply the requirements of the regulations as written. If the plan submitted conforms to these regulations, the council has no discretion or choice but to approve it." In the case of Connecticut Resource Recovery Authority versus Planning and Zoning Commission of the town of Torrington, the appellate court of the state of Connecticut stated, and again, quote, "A site plan is a plan filed with the zoning commission or other municipal agency or official to determine the conformity of a proposed building, use, or structure with specific provisions of the zoning regulations. It is a physical plan showing the layout and design of a proposed use, including structures, parking areas, and open space, and the relation to adjacent uses of roads, and containing the information required by the zoning regulations for that use. The agency has no independent discretion beyond determining whether the plan complies with the site plan regulations and applicable zoning regulations incorporated by reference. A site plan may be modified or denied only if it fails to comply with the requirements already set forth in regulations." And that case cites the Allied Plywood case as the controlling body of law regarding this particular issue. And further, in the landmark Connecticut Superior Court case of Rosemary Reedy, which is the zoning board of appeals of the town of Salisbury at all, the court stated, and I quote, "Although the board never reached the merits of the planning and zoning appeal, General Statute Section eight dash three, sub G, sub one, makes it clear that the purpose of a site plan application is to help the commission determine if the proposed structure is in conformity with the zoning regulations. Once the commission approved the site plan, it is hard to see how the ZDO's decision to issue a zoning permit would have been discretionate." Period, end of quote. Simply stated, if the Planning and Zoning Commission approves the site plan approval application, it has conclusively determined that the proposed structure is conforming with the planning and zoning regulations, and neither the zoning enforcement officer nor the zoning board of appeals can overturn that decision. I've attached a copy of the, so that decision has Exhibit U, which I'd like to get.
So you're saying, you're saying there that she has to issue the zoning permit after the Planning and Zoning Commission has okayed the site plan?
Once the planning and zoning has approved the site plan, that is a determination by the Planning and Zoning Commission that what is shown on that site plan conforms to the planning and zoning regulations or is otherwise a permitted, non-conformity use. Once they have made that decision, the zoning enforcement officer can't change that. Whether or not she agrees, she cannot change that. That, that decision can be appealed, of course.
But that, that decision can be appealed to the Superior Court?
That is correct.
Because she's doing an administrative duty as being zoning enforcement officer, signing off on that zoning, that zoning permit, correct?
The site plan approval, that, the approval by the Planning and Zoning Commission can only be appealed to the Superior Court. The act of the zoning enforcement officer on issuing the zoning permit could theoretically be appealed to this, to this board. However, the courts would find that to be a mere ministerial act because she has no, she has no option, she has no authority, she has no discretion to vary the approval of the Planning and Zoning Commission. She must issue the zoning permit, and in fact, did so in this case. But as Attorney Andrews raised in his presentation to you, despite the fact that there was a right of appeal from the decision of the Sulphur Planning and Zoning Commission on February twenty-two, two thousand and sixteen, Mrs. Reedy did not take that appeal. If you disagree with the decision of the Planning and Zoning Commission, appeal it. Appeal it to the Superior Court of Litchfield. If you fail to do so within the time period allowed, you forfeit your right to do that at a later time. What is happening here by attacking the certificate of zoning compliance issued by the zoning enforcement officer, and in the presentation that Mr. Reedy has made, Mrs. Silks has made, Mr. Palmer made, these are all an attempt to get you to look behind the curtain of the approval by the Planning, by the Planning and Zoning Commission. Look behind the curtain of the approval by the Salisbury Conservation Commission. Look behind the approval of the new septic system by Torrington Area Health District. In the case of Torrington Area Health District and Sulphur Conservation Commission, you don't have jurisdiction over what they do.
Well, what about in our, in our zoning regulations about the septic system being a hundred and fifty feet from the body of work?
This was a septic repair. There was an existing system in place. P one hundred A was, was drawn by George Johansson of Allied Engineering Associates. It was submitted to Torrington Area Health District. It was approved.
So, so the septic system that was there was big enough for that bigger house, septic?
Not the gross size of the house, it's the number of bedrooms in the house.
The bedrooms did not grow any more than that?
I believe that they're the same number of bedrooms as was in the, the existing house. I'm, I cannot certify that, but be that as it may, Torrington Area Health District made the decision to approve that septic system plan. The plan was approved, and the issues been raised. Why didn't the certificate of discharge get signed until last month? Well, it's the policy of Torrington Area Health District not to issue a certificate to discharge until after the certificate of occupancy has been issued. The installation of that septic system was approved by Torrington Area Health District. That approval of that septic system was part of the package presented to the Sulphur Planning and Zoning Commission and considered at its February twenty-second, two thousand and sixteen meeting. They have no authority to look beyond that, that was, that's the health, that's health code. And they accepted it, and they approved that site plan approval application. The powers of the zoning enforcement officer and zoning administrator, we've touched on. It's limited to, to sort of things. Section nine hundred point one says, "The regulation shall be enforced by the commission and by and through the zoning enforcement officer, who shall be appointed by the commission. The zoning enforcement officer shall be directly responsible to the commission and shall carry out his or her duties according to law and under such rules and regulations as the commission may time, from time to time, adopt." Now, you can't build a structure or a building under nine oh one point one until a zoning permit has been issued. In this case, a zoning permit could be issued until such time as the site plan approval has been obtained. A zoning permit is required for a site plan or a special permit. The zoning board of appeals lacks the ability to review the decision of the- The Zoning Board of Appeals lacks the ability to review the decision of the Planning and Zoning Commission. In her appeal, Mrs. Reedy, through her attorney Gerald Reedy outlines why the appeal must be granted. All of the reasons are either without merit or irrelevant, as this appeal is based on the de facto claim that the Saltford Planning and Zoning Commission's approval of the site plan approval application and the consequent issuance of the zoning permit were both in error. Those are issues that are not timely raised at this point. All appeal periods have been, have elapsed, and in fact, the appeal was taken from the issuance of the zoning period, the zoning permit. That appeal went to the Connecticut Superior Court, and that issue has been decided against Mrs. Reedy's interest. I have cited some cases which will be, which I have in part of the presentation package and I will submit with you. This presentation by the appellant through her attorney is nothing but a regurgitated and repackaged argument that was presented before the Salisbury Conservation Commission and before the Salisbury Planning and Zoning Commission. This is nothing new. These issues have been raised before. They have been considered before, and they have been found to be wanting in substance, and approvals from both of those agencies were, were obtained. I have cited a case that really mirrors this, and it's the case of Bishop versus Gilford Board of Appeals, which, the fact patterns are strikingly similar. And as you read through, I would ask me to read through this, this presentation package that I will leave with you, I think you'll find that the Bishop case, which I have, which I have a copy and will submit for the record as, well, this is the Connecticut Resources Recovery case of the Montague House. It's important to note that the February 22, 2016 Planning and Zoning Commission meeting discussed the site, the site plan for this property, that said the house currently on the lot was put in the wrong place, so that it was non-conforming according to the regulations that's been established. It was an error in the placement of, of the foundation, even though it was very clear when earlier approved that the location of the foundation was critical. Now, it was a mistake. It was laid out, wrong location, and that was brought to, and that was brought to detention of the, the decision to sit over. The current site plan application removes a portion of the house that was non-compliant and corrects the error. A question has been raised about the minimum square requirement. That was brought up at this February 22 meeting in council to the Planning and Zoning Commission attorney, Andrews addressed it and addressed it as it should have been. This lot existed in its, in the width in which we find it now, as it would apply to the 150-foot square requirement that pre-existed the implementation of the minimum square regulation. It was non-conforming in that respect, and therefore it was allowed. You've heard much, and much is made in Mr. Reedy's presentation relative to the 75-foot setback from, from the stream. Well, that's also addressed and was addressed by the, by the Planning and Zoning Commission at its February 22, 2016 meeting. An inquiry of Peter Oliver, who had been the administrator of the Salisbury Conservation Commission for 37 years, what was your thought process? And he stated quite clearly that that commission had interpreted the setback regulations as being measured from the entrance and exit from the, from the drainage pipes, not from that portion of the pipe that is underground. And they do that because they reason that if the water course is enclosed in a pipe, then it is not producing pollution or sedimentation. And he stated that's been the way it was for the 37 years that he had been on, on the commission. Then Alan Copperline made a motion with conditions, and that motion was passed unanimously. I would submit that as exhibit F. I would submit as exhibit G, the minutes of the conservation, special minutes, meeting minutes of the Conservation Commission from December 15, 2015, in which this particular issue was raised and considered. Again, this was the subject of a public hearing that sat for three nights. More than nine hours of testimony and documentation were presented during that time. This issue was considered by that commission and Conservation Commission, measured the 75-foot setback from the inlet and the outlet of the pipes, not in between. The claims relative to the issuance of the building permit, in the second of the last line, Mrs. Reedy states, "In addition to the foregoing note building permit, including a certificate of occupancy, can be issued for the structure as the original demolition permit authorizing the demolition of a pre-existing house is invalid." And he attaches a copy of the September 22, 2014 demolition permit. The powers and duties of this particular body, the Zoning Board of Appeals, are created and regulated by the general statutes, and section 8681 describes and limits the powers and duties of the Zoning Board of Appeals as follows, quoting from the statute. "The Zoning Board of Appeals shall have the following powers and duties. Number one, to hear and decide appeals where it is alleged that there is an error in any order, requirement, or decision made by the official charge for the enforcement of this chapter or any bylaw ordinance or regulation adopted under the provisions of this chapter." That's end of the quote of that, that particular statute. "The authority of the Zoning Board of Appeals is thus limited by statute to hearing and deciding appeals where it is alleged that there is an, an error made by the zoning enforcement officer." The statutory limitation of the powers from hearing, present, prevents you from hearing an appeal on actions of the building official. You have no jurisdiction over the building official office. Minimum square issue we have addressed that was considered, you see, in exhibit F, the, the language that deals with that. There is a claim relative to grading and filling, and section 601.1 and 601.2, saying that "special permit should have been obtained for the excavation, grading, and filling that took place with regard to the construction activities on 146 Millerton Road." Section 601.2 states in pertinent part, I quote, "No loam, topsoil, sand, gravel, clay, stone, or other natural earth product shall be excavated or removed, nor shall any filling or grading of land occur unless a special permit for excavation, filling, and grading for such activity has been approved by the commission in accordance with the requirements of this section, with the following exceptions," continuing the quote. "The following activities may be undertaken without a special permit for excavation, filling, and grading, provided a dangerous condition is created and there is no damage to surrounding land." First exception, excavation in connection with bona fide construction of a building or structure or the alteration of a building where such excavation is confined to the premises in which the structure is located. A zoning permit and building permit has been issued for such construction. Not more than 250 cubic yards shall be permitted to be removed from the premises. A grading, filling, and excavation can also be done without special permit for excavation in connection with bona fide landscaping of the premises. Excavation in connection with an agricultural operation and excavation in connection with the installation of improvements in accordance with subdivision and/or construction plans approved by the Planning and Zoning Commission." I submit for you as exhibit H, a copy of that section of the regulations. As Attorney Andrews said, I echo his statements here, the excavation, filling, and grading that took place on the property at 146 Millerton Road was permitted for subparagraf A of section 601.2, as it was performed in connection with bona fide construction of a building or of the alteration of a building. The excavation was combined to the premises on which the structure is located. The zoning permit, which I submit as exhibit I, and building permit had been issued for that construction, and none of the excavated soil was removed from the property. I have a letter from George Johansson, Allied Engineering Associates, in which he states, "The question was recently raised regarding the design work done by this office for the property of 146 Millerton Road. In our plans, Allied Engineering Associates Inc. did not call for any soil to be removed from the site, and the excavated soil was to be relocated to other areas on the lot. I was not on-site every day, but to the best of my knowledge, this was done." At this time, we'd like to direct your attention to parts of the submission the Planning and Zoning Commission did look at. This is a duplicate of the plan that Attorney Andrews has submitted for, submitted into evidence. This was my presentation copy at the time. I folded and put it into the file, so not looking in very good shape, but what is important here is to note that in the Allied Engineering Associates existing site plan demolition plan, it states right in this location, and this was seen by Planning and Zoning Commission, "End of house and screen porch to be removed and area backfed." Additionally, there is an entire, this page is of range, grading, landscaping, stormwater and road, stormwater management, erosion, and sediment control. This shows the existing contours and the proposed contours. This lays out the grading for the entire property. This was seen by the Planning and Zoning Commission. They viewed it, they approved this set of plans. The applicant, Rosemary Reedy, claims that this, that we were not allowed to do this, but they provided no credible evidence that any soils was removed from the property. Mr. Johansson has stated in this letter that his plans called for that, that soil all to be used on the property and none to be removed. This is also an allowable exception under the subparagraf D that Mr. Andrews had quoted, because it was construction work, grading, filling, as a result of an approved plan, which was a site plan. So the argument concerning the planning and zoning regulations, section 601.2, actually makes very little sense. In the initial appeal document, Reedy states that, "Accordingly, the excavation of the basement and the subsequent filling in of a portion of the same, it required a special permit. The failure to end a special permit was a clear violation of article 602.1, and the decision of the ZEO not requiring one precluded the convening of a public hearing on the proposed activity," end quote. "The construction activities of 146 Millerton Road did call for the excavation of a basement, and the site plan approval application approved by the Saltford Planning and Zoning Commission required the demolition of a portion of the existing structure and called for filling in of that part of the cellar hole. The demolition work was completed, and the cellar hole was filled with earth, which had been stopped filed in the original cellar hole excavation." Under Mr. Reedy's interpretation of the regulations, if you take any excavation on the property, you dig a lot or toll, you would need a special permit to fill that hole. This interpretation doesn't square with reality. That interpretation would require you to get a special permit for the construction of any residence. That, that interpretation would require you to get a special permit for the repair or the construction of any septic system, as all those systems require excavation. And in the case of septic, they require stone and septic fill. I've asked the zoning enforcement officer whether or not she's ever received a special permit application for construction of a new residence or construction or repair of the septic system. And she advised me that she never has. It has never been interpreted that way, and should not be interpreted that way now. The building height calculation thing, we can make fairly short work of, I believe, Mr. Reedy claims in, in his presentation for the appellant that, quote, "The method used in Mr. Kiefer's report of June 27, 2017," copy attached as exhibit 15, "is inconsistent with the provisions of art of 309.2, as he divides the single structure into two separate buildings for purposes of the calculation," end quote. Mr. Kiefer is a registered land surveyor licensed in the state of Connecticut, and he states in his report, which is actually dated June 23, 2017, as follows, and I quote from Mr. Kiefer's report. "The average height of the roof of the existing main house and the average height of the roof of the existing attached garage was calculated as described by the Saltford Planning and Zoning Regulations. As per the planning and zoning regulations, the maximum average height of a building is 35 feet." I would submit a copy of Mr. Kiefer's report to you as my exhibit L. Mr. Kiefer signed and placed a surveyor's seal on the report certifying the accuracy of the report and the fact that the average height of the roof is, quote, "under the maximal allowable height of 35 feet," end quote. A thorough search of the Connecticut Department of Consumer Protection website does not show either Attorney Reedy or the appellant to be a registered land surveyor, a civil engineer or a licensed architect. Nor have Attorney Reedy or the appellant provided any actual evidence demonstrating Mr. Kiefer's certified works as inaccurate. Attorney Reedy and the appellant's claims to the contrary are pure fabrication, and made without any supporting evidence and thus are totally lacking in substance, and must be rejected. Again, a challenge is raised as to the calculation of the impervious surface, and in the 2017, October 23, 2017, addendum to her appeal, Attorney Reedy raises a claim that the impervious surface calculations made by Mr. Kiefer are incorrect. Mr. Reedy details his own calculations and claims, as did Mrs. Silks, that the slab under the portion of the structure which was being demolished as part of the site plan approval application had not been removed and thus should be considered to be impervious surface for purposes of this calculation. Attorney Reedy bases this assertion on a claim that the demolition permit did not specifically state that the basement slab was to be demolished, and therefore, Mr. Reedy would have you believe that the slab was left in place and still placed over it, thus making this area impervious. These are unfounded claims based upon theoretical extrapolations from assumed facts. In point of fact, the slab was demolished. I hereby submit as exhibit S, a letter from Laser Building Company. This letter is in reference to your question regarding the concrete slab removal of the former master bedroom room at 146 Millerton Road in Lakeville. The MB slab and three walls were removed in order to install the revised foundation walls and revised foundation walls and slab as per superior wall plan, to meet the requirement of the zoning site plan approval regarding 75-foot setback from existing culverts seen closed photos. I enclosed our photographs of the demolition work, demolition debris of that, of that slab, and then of the finished revised basement slab onto which the balance, the foundation was built totally in accordance with the site plan approval. As I stated, regarding the building height calculation, you know, there is no, there is no credible evidence from Mr. or Mrs. Reedy relating to how the impervious surface was calculated. There's nothing that's been introduced that shows any error at all on Mr. or Mr. Kiefer's part. And as Mr. Kiefer told me recently, as we discussed his certification, he said, and I'm quoting him, "I am licensed to measure," end quote. Attorney Reedy also states that the plans for the house, and this is in the October 23 addendum, that the plans for the house show an 11-inch overhang around the perimeter of the house, and states therefore, quote, I'm quoting from Mr. Reedy, "The area of the overhang being impervious should have been taken into account in the calculation." And this is incorrect. I submit for your review a copy of the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting minutes for the meeting day of June 27, 2016, so that's my exhibit T. Those minutes read in pertinent part, quote, "M. Kiefer and M. Capasolotro inquired as to whether, as to the overhang of a structure for impervious surface calculation. After an extensive discussion, it was agreed that the calculation would be from the exterior footprint."
Can you explain?
An overhang is not counted in the calculation of impervious surface. That's measured from the building footprint.
So that would be the foundation would be the, the footprint?
That's correct. Again, we have no proof that there was anything wrong with Mr. Kiefer's calculations. Finally, we come to the argument of municipal estoppel. And there are two leading Connecticut Supreme Court cases dealing with that, the Dornfried versus October 24 case, which I provided a copy to you. And I'm not going to go through all that except to say, there are four, there are four elements that you must prove in order, in order to prove municipal estoppel. All of those four elements have been, have been met. My- My clients obtained all of the proper permits. They retained the appropriate experts to help guide them through the process to make sure that they could obtain those permits. Having gotten the site plan approval from the Planning and Zoning Commission and the zoning permit from the zoning enforcement officer. They then proceeded with the work on the property. They would not have purchased this property without site plan approval. That was obtained in 2014 by the then owner of the property. So that approval was a condition precedent to completing the purchase. That approval was obtained. The zoning permit was issued, construction began on the wrong place, so that was stopped. However, the purchase was made because of that condition precedent. After obtaining the approval in February of 2016, my clients were then authorized, and you'll see in the February 22 minutes, 2016 minutes, that the Planning and Zoning Commission itself told the zoning enforcement officer that she could lift the cease and desist order. So there's evidence in the minutes of that meeting that Mrs. Brusie was authorized to lift that order and she did that orally with me and then of course confirmed it in writing to Mr. Reedy. So having obtained those approvals and bought the property and then they went to improve the property. Those improvements and the cost of the acquisition are detailed here and as part of my exhibit Q, which I submit, is a letter from Mr. Laser that says in addition to the other expenses, the construction costs related to the demolition of existing houses, construction of new residents as per plan 146 Milton Road, the total cost, including demolition and new construction, was $3.4 million. We add that to the original acquisition cost of $1,207,000. And it meets the criteria of municipal estoppel, showing that in reliance on the actions of municipal officers authorized to act and municipal boards authorized to act, my clients did something they never would, they would not otherwise have done. They exercised due diligence to find out whether they were doing things the right way. They obtained the permits and in reliance on those permits, they expended significant funds. In the event that the decision of the Planning and Zoning Commission or the issuance of the zoning permit or the issuance of the certificate of zoning compliance is not upheld by this board, then my clients would have been substantially damaged. And it is our position that under the doctrine of municipal estoppel, you really can't undo the issuance of the certificate of zoning compliance. So the total loss that my clients would have suffered, would suffer in the event that this board grants the appeal would be $4,687,500.
Is that a threat, sir?
Excuse me?
Or a problem, sir? Is that a threat?
No, this is a statement of fact and it's part of what you need to present as part of a municipal estoppel argument. I think your counsel will advise you that that is so. We don't threaten, we just prevent, we present the facts and the laws, we understand it. And we are entitled to do that. And the case law that I'm submitting as part of this presentation supports that. As exhibit L, the regulations on the building height, exhibit M, Conservation Commission minutes of August of 2014, exhibit N, the September 2, 2014 Planning and Zoning Commission minutes, and the two pages I cited as the Dorn Creek case and the Cortezi case on municipal estoppel. I would submit those as well.
Was this submitted?
Yes, this is the closing statement on the purchase of the property. That's exhibit, oh, Mr. Lord, thank you for pointing that error out. I want to point out that in Mr. Palmer's presentation, a lot of the photographs were even of this property. The top of Belgo Creek and the delta that's being formed in the photographs of the erosion and damage. That's not on 146 Milton Road. That's on a different property. This is part of the confusion that is, is part of Mr. Reedy's presentation. He wants you to think about something else that's not relevant to what is in front of you. Those exhibits and the recitation of facts saying that, you know, a ton of fertilizer, the ground was stripped and then a ton of fertilizer was applied. On what basis does that allegation make? My clients needed to do some grading. When the grading was completed, the area was seeded. Fertilizer was not being used as part of the seeding process because of sensitivity to what might happen if that fertilizer were migrated into the lake. My clients also have a vested interest in protecting the water quality of the lake. They own and have invested nearly $5 million on the property on the lake. They don't want to see the water quality decreased. Talking about the additional landscaping work that might have been done. Dry-laid stone walls are not considered to be impervious surfaces. One of the walls that was pointed out is well beyond the 300-foot lake protection overlay zone. It doesn't count for impervious surfaces anyway. But again, this is all part of the disinformation that you've been given relative to the activities on this property. The stream erosion and delta, that's on 144 Milton Road. Septic issue of address with you. I think that it is, there is no basis to sustaining this appeal. You cannot look behind the decision made by the Planning and Zoning Commission. You have no jurisdiction to look behind the conservation permission decision or that of the Orange Area Health District or the Building Office. The zoning administrator, based upon plans prepared by a certified and registered land surveyor, signed and sealed by him, and his calculations also signed and sealed, and based upon her site visit and with counsel from the Planning and Zoning Commission, issued a certificate of zoning compliance. The question before you is, did she find that things complied or did she not? She said she did. And on that basis, I would ask you to deny this appeal. And I would submit, just for the record.
Thank you.
Thank you all. Mr. Reedy, I have a copy for you.
Thanks. I'm not an attorney, so I'll be really quick. I just, for the record, say my name again, Ian Howbrook. I'm a budding property owner. Just by coincidence, I used to own the property at 146 Milton, so I know the property pretty well. I'm not going to make any legal arguments. You've already heard all of those. Most of my comments pertain to issues of character, I would say. I'd like to make three points. I'd like to say something about Mrs. Brusie. I'd like to say something about some of the pictures that you saw today. And I'd like to say something about the argument of protecting the lake, which was brought in into this discussion. First of all, Mrs. Brusie, I've known Mrs. Brusie for 10 years now. I worked with her when I built my house, had some problems back, we appeared before this committee. I know her to be a person of good character and she's an honest person and I'm sure that she made the decisions that she did regarding 146 Milton Road in good conscience and based on her knowledge of the regulations. The reason I bring this up, I know that she's been vilified and in many ways treated badly in some situations. Secondly, the pictures today, you saw some of the pictures today. And there are drones flying over my property, taking pictures and sending those pictures to members of the administration here and to Mr. Rand with lengthy narratives describing things and hypothesizing about what's going on. So the reason I bring this up is, you saw some pictures today, one of them on page 16 in Mr. Palmer's presentation, that wasn't taken from a drone. Apparently somebody came onto my property or near my property today and took that picture without my permission. And I think this is becoming fairly common. And to me, this is harassing. It's harassment. And I would like to stop, it's not only, I know it's not illegal, but it certainly is creepy to have to know that somebody's constantly taking pictures of your property. Especially the narratives that have been sent. I've had to respond to those because of the work that I've been doing at Belgo Creek and the attempt to link the Belgo Creek work that I've been doing with Mr. Tyler's property. And so that gets me to the third point that was brought up having to do with protecting the lake. And this was brought up in the context of the Belgo Stream, which as some of you may know, runs through my property and a small portion of it runs onto Mr. Tyler's property. Mr. Tyler, I just want to say first of all, with regard to the matter of protecting the lake, Mr. Tyler, I think, as Mr. Capasolatro pointed out, has made significant improvements on the property from when I owned it. He's improved the septic system. He put in a, you know, methods for keeping the water from running off his house and into the lake. A rain garden, things like that. But I've been working very closely with him on the landscaping. He's planted numerous trees and he and I collaborated on some of the landscaping between the two properties. So I know that he's a person who cares about the lake. He's not, obviously not trying to destroy the lake. The Belgo Stream has been a big issue and I just wanted to address that. I've argued previously in public hearings that Mr. Reedy has been trying to link the Belgo Stream issue with his appeal. And the, I put in an application three years ago, it would be three years ago in December to improve it, to improve the stream because the pipe was broken. You saw some pictures today in Mr. Palmer's presentation. And it finally was approved after my third application. Had it been approved, had the first application been approved, I would have made much better, I would have improved the runoff from Belgo Stream in a much more effective way than I finally ended up doing because of all the opposition that I got from Mr. Reedy and from others about that. And so I think it's a bit disingenuous to say that a lot of this has to do with protecting the lake because I would have done something to protect the lake three years ago if the original application had been, had not, I actually withdrew the application because of the attempt to link it with Mr. Tyler's property. So the reason I bring up all these points is that I am requesting you that you deny the appeal after having studied all the arguments, pros and cons. It appears to me that the house is in compliance. And I know that I can't do anything to stop the sort of adversarial culture that's developed. But I do hope that you'll make a quick decision so that the drones will stop flying over my house. Thank you.
Okay, at this point, I'll give Mr. Reedy 15 minutes to rebut anything new that's been brought up.
Thank you. With regard to Mr. Howbrook's statement, he doesn't say that in order to accomplish this, he needed my permission because part of it was on my land and I agreed to accommodate him. In addition, the first appeal that he had, the first application, was it was going to move the stream off Mr. Tyler's property because there was a contractual obligation to do so. In addition, the stream was going to be piped another 60 feet. And the state is in favor of daylighting streams so that we didn't feel that that was the best plan and that's why we opposed it. Now going to a couple of Mr. Capasolatro's points. Mr. Capasolatro made a really strong statement regarding if there's a site plan approval, the ZEO has no choice but to issue the permit. And therefore, she's acting in a ministerial way. And you cannot appeal that issuance of the permit to the ZVA because you're really appealing the Planning and Zoning Commission. You've got to go to Superior Court and I didn't. What he didn't tell you is that they issued a notice of the issuance of the permit. And I handed it to you at the last hearing. And what it said at the end of the notice was that anybody agreed by the issuance of this permit can appeal its issuance to the ZVA. Says in a public notice and the public notice was paid for by Mr. Capasolatro. So here he's setting out down the Primrose path and then boldest thing about how I missed this and I missed that. And it's all part and parcel of what's going on. Now in addition, with regard to the setback from a water course, the, and what the Conservation Commission did or didn't do. First of all, they didn't talk about 75 feet. When they first approved this, and I'm handing you this email from Peter Oliver, he says that the information presented to the Conservation Commission was prefaced by statements that the water course had been piped past the proposed alterations in septic plan. If you look at that survey, you'll see that is not a ditch, that's a stream. But in order to get it passed, they told the Conservation Commission that it was piped so you don't have to worry about it. In addition, you should realize when Mr., they quote Mr. Oliver for his 37 years, they did not find a significant problem with regard to a setback from a water course whether it was piped or not piped in 37 years. They have never found that a project to have a significant impact on the water course. And in fact, if you look at this, the lake is within, the septic is within the upland review area of the lake and it's, they did not even examine it. They didn't look at it. It's, so this aspect of what we do and don't do. In addition, he was asked in the past, what was their treatment of culverts? And he said, they only look at road culverts as being outside of their jurisdiction. And I'll give you a copy of that statement. With regard to this particular stream, the attorney for Conservation Commission went to the state and said, look, is the stream and a pipe a water course for state regulation? And they said, yes, it is. He didn't like that response because it's clear if this is a water course, half that house has to go. So they had to find some way to say it's not regulated by the Conservation Commission. However, Peter Oliver said at the meeting that it was referred to, oh yes, we have jurisdiction over it and we regulate it. But as a rule of thumb essentially, we don't concern ourselves and it's not going to have an impact. Well, that's fine. The Conservation Commission looks at impact, but that's not the remit of the Planning and Zoning. They look to distance, 75 feet. They don't look to whether it has an impact or not. Now with regard, so the water course is there and the state says it's there and nobody says they don't have jurisdiction over that water course. And I'll get to the, I don't want to jump out of my pen too much. The estoppel argument that Attorney Capasolatro makes requires good faith reliance. He skips over the fact- He skips over the fact that the purchase was based on the approval in 2014, which was obtained on the basis of misrepresentation. And that's why the 2014 approval was revoked and a cease and desist put into place. The existence of Belgo Stream was concealed. The property lines were manipulated to create a nonconformity so that they use Section 501 of the P&amp;Z regs to say, "Look, I'm going to solve this nonconformity, so I should have a, be able to take this nonconformity over here." Well, you can't create a nonconformity. It's against the regs. There is no body in town to which an appeal of the lack of a proper demolition permit can be appealed. The town never acquitted one. And one of the things about the demolition permit was they required to tell the bodyguards we would be put on notice. We could have taken action if we had known. And in this regard, Attorney Capasalatro says he had the opportunity. He raised these at these various meetings. I was not allowed to speak at the P&amp;Z meeting where this was passed because it wasn't a public hearing, so the public couldn't be here, couldn't speak. The second thing was I was on the agenda to speak at the planning and zoning, but they said because I was appealing to the ZVA, they took me off the agenda. Meanwhile, they already knew I was going to be dismissed from the ZVA for reasons we don't need to go into. With regard to the calculation by Mr. Kiefer, if you look at the map, and I'm going to refer to this map, so I might as well bring it out now. If you look at the map of the, this is a map of 2015. If you look at it, there are not two houses here. It's one house. And the grade goes steeply down towards the lake. By cutting this in half and pretending this is a separate house, he measures this roof from this grade and this roof from this grade. Now I don't know how much change that makes, but the regulations say you've got to look from the average grade to the highest roof. You can't, the regulations don't allow you to take that building and cut it in half. In addition, this is not, there's a whole second floor that goes through here. This is just not a garage that happens to hang on here. This is an intricate part. There's bathrooms up here and it's all in one. Indeed, so that's the first part with regard to his finding. The second thing is, I'm told that I have no proof because I didn't measure it. There is no trespassing signs all over that area. And if I ever set foot on that area, I'll let property measure something. I'd be in a court tomorrow on the receiving end of a lawsuit. So he's right. I don't have the ability to do that. I can only look at what I see and I can't go on the property do any measurements and I'm not as available. But I look at the regulations and look what's happening. Now, I'll give you 10 more minutes. Okay? Okay. With regard to whether the house as built was a house as approved, they were still building there as of a month ago. And I'll give you, here are the two, this is the map of the 15th that they submitted and used for the approval, for the site plan approval. This is the latest as-built map of 2017, which I got today. So I'm going to have you take a look at both of these.
Who prepared this?
Both are from Mr. Kiefer. And first thing I'm going to point out is that this is the house in July, as shown on the plans as well. Now, this is the house in August and it was still going on. And you'll see a patio is being put in here. And a patio is taken into account for side yard setbacks. So there's a patio going in here and I don't know to what extent the impervious surface is impacted because I'm not on site, I can't be on site. But I can tell you there's a cement mixture over here being used so that certainly there's a side back of side yard problem there. And with regard to, now I brought a magnifying glass because my eyes aren't that good. But this is the original foundation plan as put together by Laser Building. And there's a certain 36 by 27. And you'll notice that it comes up here, dips out, goes straight up. Well, these other ones have been expanded. This goes out twice, this not once. So this has been expanded. Well, how do you, how do you do that? Well, maybe, because you're going to have to change the slab or the concrete slab there to do that if you're moving off there. Well, here's an application to remove the garage slab there and replace it. So they're removing, they're removing this and replacing it, but they're still calling it the same distance and the same size. So as I say, I'm not there. I can't tell. All I can do is look at documents. And this is the application for, that's the approval. This is the application remove the concrete slab.
That's back in July, 2017?
Is that 16? Yes, after, after the approval. After the permit was issued. So that was a change and Mr. Fitting is not a part of the planning and zoning as what's happening, what can be done, what can't be done. So he doesn't know. Somebody comes in and says, "I want to replace the slab." Fine. He's fine. Now, Attorney Capasalatro also mentioned about the overhangs. Well, it's true that they got it by a wooden board.
Do you really think so?
Oh, yes. Yes.
All of that one?
Yes, I'm going to give all of this. I'm going to give this. This is the one that shows, this is a change. That's the original foundation, which they got approved for. And this shows a changed foundation. And they said in the site plans, you don't see anything about these walls or this aspect or this stone walkway. None of that's in there. So I'm giving you this, so I don't know what, what impact that has on the impervious surface either. And I, if I didn't give you this, I did to give you this. This shows the side in July with just grass. And then all of a sudden it was modified and this patio was put in. Now Attorney Capasalatro has talked about the three calculations that were done by Mr. Kiefer as the impervious surface. And I put those together in a table. I think I have another one. I have another copy. Yes. So if you look with me, it's hard to tell from the various reports that he made. So I tried to put a table together to list each from each table. And there's parts that are there and then disappear. But one thing that is interesting is now in the latest, there's a landing roof at side door. Well, the side door was up against the, is that 27? Okay. The side door was already up against the the 25 feet here. So I don't know where the side door is going in, but it's an 80-foot landing. Now, that impacts the side yard setback. There's also, if you look on number four, it's a 625 report. He has a porch, a porch with 202 feet. That disappears because it's incorporated in the house. So you don't, it's hard to follow back and forth. But there are a number of additional walls and walkways here. Now Attorney Capasalatro says they were all dry fill and that's, that's okay. I don't know if they're dry filled. There's a, cementments are out there. And I, as I say, I can't go on the property and just raise these things. I would ask that somebody do an independent check to go and see rather than just taking people's worth work. The, the aspect about the removal of a part of the house. I have here Well, this is a further example. This is ongoing work going on there. This is the new side entrance. It's taken from my side of the fence because I can't, but that sticks out and that's not shown. You have five minutes? Okay. What I'm, what I'm searching for, oh. So what I'm searching for is this, you've heard a report that the slab was removed. This is the, the permit that was given for the infill. And you will see it says infill on existing slab. So we have town, why would they go to the town and say they're going to infill on existing slab if they were taking the slab out? But, so we have Mr. Laser's letter, but I don't, I don't know what to do with that. In addition, Attorney Andrews, for whom I have a lot of respect, says that I can't bring up these things because they were previously brought up. Well, they weren't brought up. I never got a chance to bring up before. And the certificate of going compliance, the officer has the sole responsibility of issuing it and it has to comply with the regulations. Whether the commission approved a site plan or no site plan, it doesn't matter. And in fact, she went to the commission and asked them to tell her to issue it. And they said, "We can't do that. That is your sole responsibility. You have to look at it. You have to look at it and you have to satisfy yourself that it satisfies all the regulations." So the, the regulations that I'm pointing out, we never, they were never decided by court of law, but that was on the issue. The, and she has the responsibility of looking. And she knows about the water course. The minimum square, that lot did not exist in that configuration prior to 2009. That lot was a much larger and wider lot. They reduced the size of it. And there's a provision in the regulations that say when you remove something entirely, you then have to comply with the regulations that exist when you build something new. And they did not, they did not reveal the minimum square when they applied for the permit, that they didn't have a minimum square. That was brought up. So all this stuff about we had a chance, we didn't have a chance. And I can see that I'm taxing your, I just want to make sure that so that I believe the law is clear that you can, matters are not off limits because the commission has said the, the permit, the site plan is okay. In addition, the commission never dealt with the question of the water course. It was just finesse. We had Peter Oliver who did his talk about his 37 years and but what was never brought up because they couldn't bring it up was the fact that they don't find something to have an impact on the water course has nothing to do with the planning and zoning regulations. I think I repeated that. Two minutes? Okay. With regard to the 250 yards of soil, that's a lot of soil. I saw a lot of trucks going off that site with material in it. But I, I'm not there, so I don't know how much was taken. But there is, the law is clear, the regulations are clear. If you want to fill something in, there's no exception. The exception is for taking stuff out, but there's no exception for putting stuff into the ground. And with regard to when I should have brought it up, I kept asking Ms. Brucie, you know, they need a special permit. And she just blew me off. In addition, with regard to this orally lifting, the cease and desist, I kept asking, can I get a copy of it? And it was six months before she told me, "Oh, I already lifted that back so and so." And that's the problem with it. You can't orally lift it because nobody can appeal it. Nobody. And she said she didn't have to publicize, she didn't have to publish a decision to lift it. Now in the past, it was issued in writing and in the past, they've always been lifted in writing. And in fact, you heard an appeal here a number of years ago about the lifting of a cease and desist for 144. And it was the same parties involved and the same, same group. So everybody knew what was going on. And at the same time, I'm asking her, I'm really badging her for this cease and desist lifting order. She confers with Attorney Andrews because I submitted his invoice. And they have a conversation about the letter to Mr. Capasalatro lifting the cease and desist. That's what says in the invoice that I gave you. And why would she be asking in May when she lifted it in February? And then she comes back for the first time and says, "I orally lifted it." She orally lifted it. Why couldn't she tell me in February? I could have added it to my appeal. Or maybe it's better that I didn't because I never got a chance to appeal it.
Yeah, that could finish.
Okay, well, for all these, for all these matters, I would ask that you independently go and take a look at this, rather rely on statements from here and statements from there because there's been a lot of work on that site and the, the plans have shown are not a house that presently exists there with all the additional accoutrements. Thank you for your time. And I'm going to get better organized, honestly. Okay. At least because I didn't have electronic slides tonight with the, oh, look. I went back to my handout.
It's just going in?
Yes, yes, that's for you.
This?
Yes. Oh, one other thing. I'm sorry. The overhang aspect that Attorney Capasalatro brought up the minutes of the meeting we need to bring up is two minutes, two meetings later, the chairman, Michael Clemmons, said, "What are you getting? Of course this is an overhang." And I'm going to let this one particular house go this time because you relied on the statement from the previous meetings that we're not going to count on the overhang. that we're not going to count on the overhang, but we are. Just so you know.
Thank you, thank you. Okay, at this point, I would like to close our hearing at, public hearing at 7:29. Okay. I don't know about you guys.
Yes, let's go.
But what we will do is, we have a meeting on the 24th. 21st? Regular meeting, going to be our annual, going to be our annual meeting. 21st, 21st at 5 o'clock, we have our annual meeting. We collect our officers. And then at that point, it gives us some time to review everything. Give time for Stephen to review everything and then we will go into deliberations after we are. So. Okay?
That's it?
Hi, everybody.